Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Here.
Joy Grissom.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
William Maxwell.
Here.
Bill Mosley.
Here.
Mickey Robinson.
Here.
Henry Siemens.
Here.
Brian Simmons.
Here.
Robert Van Winkle.
Here.
Cale Crane.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, would you listen to a word of prayer?
Let's pray. Dear most gracious heavenly father, we thank you, Lord, for this day that you have blessed us with. Lord, we ask you to be with this commission tonight as they make decisions for this county. And, Lord, we just ask you that they be with them and bless them with making the right decisions that are good on thy side. Lord, we pray for our military soldiers, airmen, and navy that are throughout this world, Lord, and we just ask you to be with them, keep them safe, and bring them home safe to us, Lord. We ask all this in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
If everybody will stand, Henry is in late pledge.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice are ours.
Item number three, approval of May 17th meeting minutes.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mickey to approve, here second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, motion carries. Item number four, Committee A report. Will.
All right, Committee A met June the 8th. Several items on the agenda. They are quite a few notes here in the back, if you will pay attention to those. First item on the agenda was the approval for amendments to Fund 101 as presented, and you should have a copy of those amendments to 101. Sorry, I'm trying to find it. All right, I got it now. They're all backwards. You may have any questions on those guys.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the amendments to Fund 101 as presented.
Second. Motion by Will and second by Mr. Mosley. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Will.
Next item was the amendments to Fund 112 courthouse jailhouse maintenance. And I'd like to make that in form of motion, it is presented as well.
Motion by Will, here second.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
Next item was amendments to Fund 116, solid waste. Like to make form of motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Will to approve. Who made the second? Mickey. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Will.
Next item was amendment to Fund 118 ambulance service. Make that in form of motion to approve that as well.
Is this just extra for the fuel?
Yes, all last three of these were all fuel increases, I believe. At least two of them were. Yeah, three of them are.
Motion by Will, here second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
All right, next item is a continuing budget resolution. It doesn't appear that we're going to have a budget by the end of the fiscal year for the start of the new one, so we need to pass a continuing budget resolution for the 2023 budget year.
Any projection of when it will be done?
Pretty quick. Should have it definitely ready for the July meeting. Yes, to approve it, yes.
Second.
Who made the second? Mickey. I can't see you, Mickey. Roll call.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
All right, next item was a bid for replacement of the damaged roof at courthouse. We did receive a bid for $5,000 by Michael Sullivan to repair. It is available here, handwritten bid. Place any rotten boards and siding, place vinyl with metal, J-channel and transition. Also putting vinyl back up on the fair building. There's a couple pieces of vinyl off of the fair building, I think it was, to be exact, too.
Question. Mr. Chairman.
Yes, he is licensed bonded insured. Of course, Stacy, you want to tell them what we talked about?
We discussed also drafting a contract, you know, between Mr. Sullivan and the county, providing any type of, you know, provisions regarding liability.
I think that was going to be a question I had before we approved this, so I think that'd be a good idea.
And Mr. Uptitch and I discussed that, that we would draft that for the county.
And we weren't going to, this was, money was going to be out of next year's budget anyway. We talked about that in Committee A, so it's not a, it's not an amendment, yeah, exactly.
I have a question on, is that, is that like putting a Band-Aid on it temporarily? Or is that fixing it permanently?
My understanding is going to fix it permanently. He's going to put tin up there to take care of it. It's not going to be vinyl, he's going to put tin, so.
Well, the reason I asked the question, Mayor, we've got more problems than just that staple leaking out there. I toured that courthouse, old courthouse, and the birds are going underneath the roof. They're running upstairs. Ceiling's falling, and the structure on it is really damaged bad. Now, my question is, go ahead and get it, if we vote to go ahead and get it fixed for $5,000, the staple? Can we look, our historical society look at getting a grant to really fix it good?
Sure. You know, if they so choose to do that, that'd be fine. I mean, it'd have to be run through the county, of course, but, you know, this is our fourth time in bidding that out for the staple, and we've gotten this one bid. You know, I just feel like we need to honor the bid, if it's passed, I think we need to honor the bid and get that finished, because we've talked about this for months, you know, and trying to get it done.
I agree, I agree.
But, as far as the other, I mean, you're right, there is a lot of work that needs to be done.
And I'd like to make amendment, if I could, to that motion, that we go ahead and honor his bid to fix the staple, and later try to get a grant, somebody.
Well, I don't think you can do that, because you're, what you have on the table right now is a motion to approve the bid.
Yes.
Then, I think that would be a consideration of, you know, either in the next few weeks, couple of months, or the next administration, if they want to work with the historical to try to find a grant to do that.
Hey, I did want to say, when he went up there, Mr. Sullivan, I had him to look to see where the birds were coming in, and the eaves aren't rotted out at the courthouse. They're coming in where the staple, the top of the staple comes down, so I asked him to look into putting some kind of wire mesh in there when he did that to keep the birds from coming in, so.
Well, I think putting the tin will take care of that, because there won't be any way for me to.
He said that he would take care of it, so.
Second. Any action?
Make a motion to approve that bid with a contract prepared by the attorney. Sorry.
Motion by Will, here second.
Second.
Who?
Mickey.
Mickey. Roll call please.
So will they draft a, you will draft, your guys will draft a contract, and then we will, the mayor and the, sign it, okay. Sorry.
Roll call.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Will.
Next item is for the bid of the food for purchasing at the jail. This is something required by audit every year. Excuse me, we put that out for bid. There was only one bid received with two options from IWC, Institutional Wholesale Supply, Cookeville, Tennessee. And Committee A reviewed the bids and chose to look at option B, which gives us a more flexible pricing plan, and we're not locked into a price. It is here for review, and I'd like to make that in form of motion to approve that bid for option B that was presented.
Motion by Will, here second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
All right, next item was the ambulance purchase from American Rescue Plan money. Spelled that wrong, I just saw, anyway. So we had allotted, we were short on money that was allocated for this, so we would like to increase that to $260,000 to cover that purchase of the ambulance out of the ARP money. And I'd like to make that in form of the motion. This is just to allocate additional funds from ARP to.
They're raising from 250 to 260?
I believe that's correct, yes, sir.
And all that's coming out of ARP money?
Correct.
Thank you.
It was all backwards, guys. It should, we're pulling off the back of your packet.
Thank you. Got a motion by Will, here second.
I'll second it.
Second, Mr. Mosley. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
Next item was to approve the purchase of the ambulance from a buyer's consortium. Ms. Director Brookers here, she'd like to add to that. It is a Demir's ambulance, similar to what we already have, is that correct? And this is the correct contract amount, or purchase amount? And that does include the cot and the power load, right? Okay. I'd like to make that in form of motion to approve that purchase through this buyer's group. Is it SAVIC 21, or did it, the name changed, I think I? SAVIC, P-A-S-I.
I'll second.
Motion by Will and second by Mickey. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries.
Our next item was budget amendments for the school system fund 141. There were some adjustments, they are listed here, there are several pages. If anybody has any questions for Ms. Cole, she is here, but I think just a few things. I'd like to make that in form of motion to approve that amendments to Fund 141.
Motion by Will, here second.
Second.
Second by Brown. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Will.
All right, next item was solid waste fee exemption. We did make one exemption, Doug Dotson, at 794 McElroy Ford Road. It did meet the criteria, takes no action of the county, that's for information purposes only. There is one under review that we will be discussing our next meeting. Next item past that is the Highway Department budget amendment. This is a budget amendment that we haven't update tonight, per Mr. Oaks here, so we will not need to take action this, we will need to take action in new business that will take precedence over this current one, so there will be no need to take action on that tonight. And then one last thing is the rate change for EMS transports. We were not charging at the Medicare allowable rates, and this brings us more in line with that to get the most money that is allowable by Medicare. And that is presented here, and I'd like to make that in form of a motion to adjust those rates to what is presented.
Motion by Will, here second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Van Winkle. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Is there anything else, Will?
That's all, sir.
Item number five, appointment of Tabitha Robertson and Kelly Lewis to Parks and Park and Recreation Board.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. By Will and a second by Bill. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, motion carries. Item number six, appointment of Brenda Clark Anderson to the Historical and Heritage Committee. Any action?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Will and second by Bill. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, motion carries. Item number seven, no reapproval for Abigail Robertson, Elise Elsie Plalock. Any action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Will.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, Bill.
Will, second by Brown.
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not, motion carries. Any old business? Old business? Any new business? I got questions for the mayor. Put you on the spot.
No, you ain't need that, Bill.
On this ARP money that you got, the county got?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed, and all, all items on here are RP money, right?
Which one, what are you looking at, Bill, that way I can? Oh, yeah, yeah.
I noticed you got Cedar Grove for repairs pending, and Spartan Town Community Center pending.
I can answer that for you, Bill. Everything on that below the line there, it starts with Cedar Grove, we haven't paid anything out on that, but you all have approved it to be paid out.
Could I finish, please?
Oh, yes.
I noticed you don't have Coneswell on there.
Commissal talked to them today.
It's under the other ones.
Yeah. They have the 7,500, just like everybody else. They contacted them today, and they'll be.
Across the mountain, all community centers.
All community centers, yeah.
On that list, it says like something, community centers $30,000, that's the other four. The two, the reason I listed those separate, because they were the only ones that I turned in, like a request so far.
Commissal gave me today what they were going to be doing, so, yeah, I told them, go forward, it's there waiting on them.
So the money will be there?
Yeah.
If they don't get this all done by the next administration, money is.
It's still going to be there, because it's approved, yes.
Thank you, thank you. Any other new business? Randy?
Randy has, we need to take care of his. It's just his state revenue for, state aid, go ahead, Randy, I'm sorry.
Committee aid we met, where I paid Rogers Group is the same price, but where the state paid me on the state aid roads, it was like $1,068 higher, because of the gas fluctuation, and that's what I got today.
But we also need to put this into your budget, because it was not in there, correct? That was what your amendment was, that we brought, so.
Yes, because it'll be higher. It'll be a thousand something dollars higher than what.
Yeah, but we didn't, I think the budget amendment was to place that in your budget, because you had not put any in state aid, because you weren't planning to get any.
Exactly.
So this will be in addition to his budget, an amendment to his budget for the total.
Yes, for the total.
312, 973. Everybody understand that, it's a bit confusing.
For the total year.
He did not have any state aid money in his budget, and then it came in right at the last minute here, so we had to put that in. He was not expecting to get that.
Right, it come in, so we went ahead and paid, and that's what it come out to be.
It would be an amendment for 312, 973.
Exactly.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
I didn't say it.
Motion by Will, here second.
Second.
David.
Roll call please.
Here second.
David Chandler.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Siemens.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Cale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Not, motion carries. Will.
The school system has three additional amendments that we need to have approved. One is for bus drivers. They received a raise after our budget was done at the beginning of this school year, because bus drivers are hard to come by, they're hard to keep, and we actually were able to retain all of them. The second one is, we had to add two more thousand dollars to their salaries and wages due to ESER funding, to where we put more responsibility on a person, okay? And then the last one is career ladder. We had, I had failed to put career ladder in there for one of our librarians, and so we didn't have a line on it for it, and we had to put that one in there.
Question.
Pardon?
Question on number two.
Okay.
Other salaries, wages and other salaries, what are you talking about?
Other salaries, we had a person that was responsible for working on the ESER, which is y'all's ARP money, that's comparable, we call it ESER, and they were given more responsibilities, and so that money was not set aside for that. It'll come out of ESER, but it was not in there to where we would be over budgeted.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Will. Here second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Kevin.
Make the second, Cale?
Everybody wants to sign it.
Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Dale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote?
Let's get out of here.
Not motion carries. Any other new business?
I have some amendments on payroll items that I gave y'all. These are just little numbers, I'm assuming where we did the bonuses, because it's never hit these little numbers that have been over. I took from within the fund, so none of these are coming from fund balance. It's like social security retirements, things like that. You want me to go through them one by one, or?
Which committee?
Total of $396.26. It's social security retirement, unemployment, in the trustees' office, the circuit court clerk, library, and sole conservation.
We have to do these individually, or do?
All fund, one on one, right?
Okay. Make a motion to approve the. The changes in the. Mr. Chandler to approve. Hear a second.
Second.
Second by Terry. Roll call please.
David Chandler.
Yes.
Joy Grissom.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
William Maxwell.
Yes.
Bill Mosley.
Yes.
Mickey Robinson.
Yes.
Henry Simmons.
Yes.
Brian Simmons.
Yes.
Robert Van Winkle.
Yes.
Dale Crane.
Yes.
Anyone wants to change your vote? Not motion carries. Any other new business?
The only thing I have is you have the trial balance that's in front of you there. This is today's for the, what was closed out by the trustees' office. You can see every fund, and there is one thing. I mean, you're looking at your ending balance right now for today, and there's only nine days left in this month. On the general fund is 1.8, 1,828,251. All these funds that you can see here, when you look at the debit and the credit, that includes the road, that includes the schools, school cafeteria, and where's the other one? Federal projects. All, as far as the credit and the debit, all are in the positive for this year, every one of them. So, in other words, they're taking more money in than what they're spending. So I think that's.
Positive and they are negative, is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you repeat that, please?
Yes, everything is.
Thank you.
All funds are positive and not negative in what they brought in this year in credit and debit, as you can see.
Thank you.
And you're welcome. But when you see these, most of these are pretty much record-breaking numbers, and I think you'll be, I think you need to pat yourself on the back, so to speak, for that. So, just wanted to point those out. Thank you.
Any other?
Make a motion there.
Hold on a second. Anybody from the audience wish to address the board? A motion by Mickey to adjourn.
One, one more thing before we adjourn. Mr. Mayor, it's, let's make this clear. We're finishing out this year with a general fund balance of over probably 1.8 million dollars. That's after everything's been paid by the county.
It, it will be there real close, we still have some payroll that's coming out, some other things that of course Jessica's going to be, but yes, it's going to be around probably in the 1.7 figure, thereabouts.
Okay.
It shouldn't be below 1.7.
It looks like the general purpose school is going to finish out probably at about 1.5, 1.6 million.
I think it's going to be more than that.
Yeah.
It's going to be closer to two, because there's so much that comes in in the month of June, and like, we got the rest of the TDA grant at 200,000 that was already spent out, but it has come in this month, and so I think it's going to be closer to two.
So I guess what I'm getting at is the state of Van Buren County is very good.
Yes. Very, best it's ever been. When we come into office, and most of y'all come in same time I did in September of 2014, we had $191,000 in the general fund. And we're going to, we're going to end up 1.5 million dollars or better than what it was eight years ago.
And no war property tax.
No, no. No, I mean, no, there's, there's, not in what we're talking about here, but, no. Now, some of, some of the funds will, there'll be a couple of the funds that'll grow a little more, because like solid waste, there's, the last payroll's already been on that, but that fund kind of changes, like Cheryl was talking, ours, that will change all the way up to June the 30th. We have revenue comes in every day for that, so.
Basically, what I was wanting to do is just shut down all these rumors I hear every day of how Van Buren County's broke and the school system's broke.
Right.
We've got more money in this county now than we've ever had, and I know of the last eight years, because I've sat in this chair that long.
Right, and, and you're exactly right. And I, I was talking to a couple of people before the meeting. You know, and they were, there was people running videos on there, and candidates were running for this, candidates running for that, it didn't really matter, but they were, they all talked about, you know, when they were being interviewed, about how bad the county budget was. And I'm sitting there thinking, well, that's a lie. And it was. I mean, it was, it was just, you know, it was a political thing, and it just really upset me, and we can look here, and right here's the numbers. I didn't create this, the county trustee did. And, and I know she's right, and, and she does a good job, but that's, that's from her numbers. We just don't make these up, you know?
I might add, better county roads.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I might add, we've got better county roads than we've ever had.
Yeah, I agree. But, and like Cheryl said, you know, she's going to have a lot of her money, so coming in, probably up to the last day. So, yeah, the, the, you're right, the state of Van Buren County is in very good shape. And we'll go over this later in, in August, too.
Land.
I have a question. In the last two years, I mean, there was a part where we were broke. State had to give us money. Is this from grants?
Actually, the. What the state, the state, the state never give Van Buren County money, because we were broke and we were never really broke. That was a lot of. It was a lot of misinformation, and I'm not saying from the comptroller's office or anything like that. I'm talking about a lot of people that go out and say things that weren't true. It's just like one, you know, one of the things, the state give us money, an agreement, that started well before we ever moved in this building. That agreement was made because of Fall Creek Falls, when they enclosed, that, that's the only money that we give them, we split that with the school, yeah. So, they give us the money for that, you know, it didn't make really a lot of difference in our budget. The second thing is, as far as the state, the last two years, they give not just Van Buren County additional monies, because they had an overflow of revenue. They give it to all 95 counties, and it depended upon your population. So, when you hear those things, and I, I, I know you're fairly new for this county, how long you lived here? Six years. So, you know, when you look at this, and what people have said, that's where you need to come and look. You know, come and look. Not come and say and do things, because you want to do things for some political reason that makes me sick. I'll be honest with you. You need to come and look at it and know what the reasons are behind it. You know, whether we have an increase, whether we have a decrease, things of that nature. You know, people need to ask the questions, not depending on somebody to come up and, and get those answers, and then go back and tailor those answers on how they want it to seem. And that, to me, is what's happened, so. Because when I look at those videos, or looked at them, they're, they're not on there now. When I looked at those videos on Facebook, that I guess 2,000, 3,000 people in the county looked at, and they said, oh, the, you know, budget's broke, it's bad, you know, and, and it's not. It's the best we've ever been, you know, so.
Can I say one thing?
Sure.
Guys, the budget is very hard, difficult to understand, and until you get in the trenches and work on this and understand it, it's hard to have a good understanding of how this budget operates and see what condition the county is in. Yes, there were some hard decisions that had to be made. It's easy to set at home and armchair quarterback those decisions, but those decisions were made for the betterment of this county. And like it or not, I mean, we have to move forward and we have to do what's correct. And I think this, this board and commission did make the right decision for this county, and I appreciate that.
I do, too, and, and, you know, when we look at it, too, and we go back, and of course, there was a will tax, you know, that was on twice, and there was a lot of misinformation on that. This board here, this commission capped that, and of course, people run around and said it was going to be $110 a tag and things of that nature. It was not. It was not, it never was. I think we first started out at $10, it was going to cap it at 50.
30.
30, that's right, I'm sorry, 30, and that's when they said it was going to be 110. And what they in turn done, we, it caused that tax increase on properties. Well, will tax, to me, in my opinion, this is my opinion only, and I'm going to hush. You get everybody involved, that's just like your, your solid waste. If you rent in Mooneham, if you rent in Cedar Grove, and you now are paying your part of that solid waste, not you, not me, as, as landowners, as it used to be, had to pay that bill. And that's what we tried to, in those two elections that we ended up having, far that ended up costing this county about, right at $60,000. How many pennies is that, Will? Four? Well, that's four pennies that we didn't budget. That's four pennies of increase. And some of those same people said at the time, we'd rather see a property increase than the will tax. Now they've changed their mind, they'd rather see a will tax than a property increase. And I'm talking about those people, and they said it right in my office with two other people in there. You know, but that's what you've got. That's what you, what was out there being spread around. And again, and watching those videos and thinking back on stuff like that, made me, just made me sick in my stomach, that people actually believe those things, when all they got to do is walk through those doors, come to the second floor, and we'll show them. That's all I got.
Kind of makes me sick that everybody that's running, or not everybody, but the new ones, most of them are going to fix the county. So what are they going to fix?
Land.
I've gotten here late, I apologize, I meant to be here sooner and had some things come up. I actually had a closing this evening at 3:00 on the old garment building there on the corner of Old 111 going to the park. And so I obviously have an interest, and I'm brand new, I'm a resident of Cumberland County, of Cumberland County, and felt like there would be some opportunity over here. I do have, I applaud, first of all, for the surplus on the budget, and I think that's great, to stay within budget and means, and that's wonderful. But I did have just a comment as far as future plans, growth, my view of building tiny houses in that facility, and exporting them locally even, as well as the surrounding counties. So Friday, we're closing on 19 lots in Cumberland County, we're looking at taking units back there and surrounding counties. So, the big question is water supply. I went down to the water department to get my water, check if I get my water hooked up, and they said, well, we can't give you water. And then dug around and initially found that I had an old meter, and so, yes, I could have one. And so I don't know where this lies, but I would, as an outsider looking in, I think that's, in my view, it's my top concern for the county, and the future growth and land that's available is where the water supply stands. And so that's my own comment at this time. And I'm just raising a question, you probably have it all.
Did it mention, you were going to employ, how many employees in that, when you get it up and running?
Initially, we'll probably be five or six, but we look at 10 to 20 once we're fully up and going, so it's not huge. But I think the key thing is, from my standpoint, is you talked about the increase in revenue. My guess is that is outside people moving in. And so when people look at, they've determined, I've talked to a realtor that I know real well in Cumberland County, and they say, well, we decided we're going to move to Tennessee. And we decide we're going to buy a tiny house, and where to move to. So the next question is, which county do they move in, what's the location, which town? And so that, I think, is, in my view, is, you know, I'm looking at, I just bought a 184 acres in Morgan County, for example. We're looking at surrounding counties, and so if we got land but no water, you know, wars have been fought over water. And so, I would suggest taking some of that funds and investing in the water supply. But again, you've probably.
We've got, yeah, we've got two and a half million dollar grant that Fall Creek Falls is going to get a small part of that. Spencer City will be getting the bulk of that to help them out on that. So we're, we're kind of trying to get ahead of that so far, so. But, just to, real quick, if you're going to, do you have a business plan?
We're just getting going.
Reason why I ask is Tennessee Department of Economic Community Development, you can go through them. It has to be 13 or more employees, so you're going to be in manufacturing, since you're going to be building those tiny houses, but if your plan brings you to that 15 or 20 that you were talking about, they can help you out on a lot of things. So if you want to come by the office tomorrow, and I'll kind of point you in the right direction and contacts there, or give me a call. Okay.
Anybody else? Mickey?
Second.
Second.
Second by Will, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Word, Jen.